Everybody. Yeah, one, slow speed, two. Very good, three. Four. Five. Stretch at each step. Six. Seven. Complete each step, eight. Very good, nine, try to complete each step. Ten. Very good, eleven. Twelve, go slowly with the counts, two, bend back, stretch. Three. In case of health issues, you can go for alternate exercise or breathing exercise, four. Very good, five. Six, go slowly with the counts. Seven. Stay in seventh count everybody, look up. Eight. Nine. Head up, push the shoulders back. Ten. Stay in forward bend. Eleven. Bend back nicely. Twelve. Two, try to complete each step properly, three. Very good. Four. Good, five. Complete each step. Very good, six. Seven. Eight. Easy. Nine. Go slowly with the count, ten. Eleven. Twelve, very good, two. Stretch back nicely, good, three. Four, head up. Five. Look at your navel region. Six. Knees chest chin down. Seven, ahead and just stop. Good, eight. Do it nicely, hip hop, look at your navel region again. Nine. Head up everybody. Ten. Easy. Eleven. Twelve. Two. Three. Four. Good, five. Six. Easy, seven. Eight. Nine. Head up. Very good, ten. Eleven. Very good, twelve. Two, bend back nicely. Three. Very good, four. Five, stretch. Six. Seven, complete each and every step. Eight. Nine. Easy. Ten. Easy come on, eleven. Twelve. Two, keep doing. Three. Is it four? Go with the counts. Five. Six. Very good, seven, stretch up, look up. Eight, just slow down, go with the counts, nine. Head up everybody. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Two, bend back nicely. Three, if anyone would like to sit, you can sit. Four. Head up. Five. Easy, six. Seven. Easy. Eight, go slowly with the counts. Nine. Yes, ten. Both legs forward, eleven. Twelve. Two. Easy, three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve, complete each step, two. Easy, three. Four. Five, good, come on, six. Seven. Easy, eight. Very good, nine. Head up in ninth count. Ten. Easy, eleven. Twelve. Two. Three, keep doing, four. Five. Six. Seven, easy, go slowly, eight. Nine. Ten. Easy, eleven. Twelve. Two, if anyone would like to sit, you can, three, ten completed already. Four. Easy, five. Six. Very good, seven. Complete each step, eight. Nine. Easy, ten. Eleven. Twelve. Two. Bend back nicely, three. Four. Head up in fourth count, one balance, five. Easy, six. Seven, easy to bat night to bat night, eight. Easy nine. Ten. Good, eleven. Very good, twelve. Two. Easy, three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Easy, ten. Eleven. Twelve. Two, complete each step, three. Easy, four. Very good, come on, five. Six. Seven, easy. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Two. Easy, three. Good, four. Five. Very good, come on, six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Easy, ten. Eleven. Twelve. Two. Three. Four. Come on, five, complete each step. Six. Seven, very good. Eight. Nine. Easy, ten. Heart shoulder level per maintain, easy, eleven. Twelve. Two. Easy, three. Four. Good, five. Very good, six. Seven. Easy, eight. Nine. Easy, ten, complete each step. Eleven. Twelve. Two. Easy, three. Four, head up in fourth count. Five. Very good, six. Seven, easy, yeah, eight. Nine. Easy come on, ten. Eleven. Twelve. Two, complete each step, three, if anyone would like to sit, you can sit down, three and four. Get into corner number four. Five, easy. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Good, come on. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Two, just slow down, complete each step, three. Four. Five. Six. Easy, seven. Very good, eight. Nine. Easy. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Two, complete each step, three. Easy, four. Five. Six. Seven, easy. Eight. Nine. Come on, ten. Eleven. Twelve, four more, two, just slow down, complete four more, three. Four. Good, five. Very good, six. Seven. Easy, eight. Nine. Head up. Ten, very good, come on. Eleven, just slow down, twelve. Two, go with the calm, slow down, three. Four. Head up in fourth count. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Easy nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Two, just two more, come on, three. Four. Five. Easy six. Six. Seven. Easy, eight. Nine. Easy come on, ten. Eleven. Twelve, last one, two. Easy, three. Four. Five. Very good, six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Easy come on, eleven. Twelve, relax everybody, legs apart, put your palms on your chest, close your eyes, observe breathing and wait for ten counts, wait for ten counts, one. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten, just relax, get ready for standing asanas. Come on, everyone up. Do nisha hai, chalo join karne chaliye. We'll start with taadaasana. Legs up closer to each other, hands to the body. Head up, ready? Legs together, hands to the body, breathing time, raise your hands on your heels up, interlock your fingers, stretch up, stretch up, raise your pelvis up, tuck your tummy in and up. And your legs together, your legs together, stand on your tiptoes, that's very good, deep breathing, breathe out, one. Stay, stay in the pose everybody, two. Easy, three. Elbows straight and stretched, five, legs together, six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen, very good, breathe out, your hands down, your heels down, legs slightly apart, we'll go for another balancing pose, tree pose. Legs only keep width wide, if you feel that you are not able to balance, you can take wall support, take your right leg up. Place your right leg, right foot on the inner side of the left thigh, your heel pointing up, toes pointing down, give some pressure. Don't keep in this way, just give a pressure here and down also, your hips are steady, breathe in, hands up over the head, tighten your palms over the head in namaskar. Elbows straight and stretched, rise up, good, one, very good, two, stay everybody, three. Four, very good, five. Six. Seven. Eight. Very good, nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Easy, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, breathe out, your hand side to down boat, your right leg down, let's go with the left leg, ready? The left leg up, if you're not able to balance, take support with one hand, or else from back, breathe in, hands up over the head, stretch up, tuck your tummy in, rise up and stay. Look at a point, look at a point, this guy is in front of you, three, very good, four. Five. Six, stay, stay, seven. Eight. Stay, ten. Eleven, breathing out normally, twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen, fifteen, well, breathe out, your hands side to down boat, the left leg down, two times deep breathing, breathe out, two times deep breathing, breathe out. Next one is arthikata chakrasana, legs up together, hands with the body, come on, everyone can go, no restriction, breathing in, your right hand side for down boat, stretch up, left hand sliding through the left thigh, breathe out. Bend towards your left and stay, stretch and stay both side elbows and both side knees are down, your upper arm, right arm is touching the ear of head, stretch and stay. Breathe in out normally, that's very good, so these legs together, two, easy, three, yeah, very good, four. Five. Six, elbow straight and stretched, seven, very good, eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven, stay, twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen, fifteen, breathe in, come up, breathe out, your right hand down, again breathing in, left hand up, stretch up and breathe out, bend towards your right, stretch this area nicely, elbow straight and stretched over the head. Yeah, very good, two, stay everybody, three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven, very good, twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen, fifteen, breathe in, come up, breathe out, relax your left hand, next one is forward bend, padahastasana. Your legs up together, hands with the body, breathing in, raise your hands up and slowly breathing out when you fall down boat as much as possible. In case you have back issues, high BP, only half bent, if you are flexible, you can go down till your forehead touches the knees, you may keep your palms down or in stature the legs and just go down as much as possible. And stay there, breathing out normally, breathe in out normally, very good, one, deep breathing, breathe out, two. Easy, three. Four. Five. Easy, six. Seven, very good, eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Easy, twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen, very good, breathe in, come up, raising your hands up, breathe out, your hands down and your legs keep width wide, your legs slightly apart, your hip width wide, okay? Arthik chakrasana, back bending, support your hips in this way, you're just finding up, fingers finding down and breathing in, pushing your stomach and the pelvic forward, just bend back as much as possible. Leave your head and neck freely back, leave your head and neck freely back, very good, one. In case of cervical issues, support your neck instead of your hip, three, very good, four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Stay balanced, ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen, that's okay, breathe out, just come back, relax your hands, legs, two times deep breathing, breathe out, two times deep breathing, breathe out. And next one is konaasana, legs apart around three feet, legs apart around three feet, breathing in, hands to shoulder level, palms facing down. Breathe out, start bend towards the right, look up and stay, in case of shoulder pain, you can keep the upper hand behind the back and head straight, if you're fit and fine, your head up, your upper hand up. And bring your head to leg side, bring your head to the leg side, good, one, your both knees and both elbows are all straight, two, easy, three. Four, look up everybody, five. Very good, six. Seven, look up at the ceiling or your fingertip, eight. Easy nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen, very good, breathe in, come up, right hand in your hands at shoulder level, breathe out, start bend towards your left. Look up, look up at the ceiling or your fingertip, that's deep breathing, breathe out, very good, three, deep breathing, breathe out, four. Five, take your head to leg side, six. Seven. Very good, eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen, very good, breathe in, come up, just stay there, stay there, trinkonasana, twist your body to the right, breathe out, bend down to the right. Your left hand down near the right leg side, according to your flexibility, you can keep it on the front side or back side or touch your ankle and look up from back. Peaches up, up, right, yeah, Ravi sir, it's a twist, if possible, you can go for a twist, otherwise that's fine, one. Yeah, otherwise that's fine, two, very good, three. Easy, four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen, well, breathe in, come up and twist the body to be left in the same way, breathe out, bend down to the left, your right hand down, left hand up, try to maintain your knees straight everybody. Knees straight, three, look up, four, maintain the knees straight, look up, five, easy, six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Easy, ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen, very good, breathe in, come up, breathe out, bring your hands on your hips, close your eyes and two times deep breath, breathe out, two times deep breath, breathe out. Legs apart and lean. We'll be going for warrior pose now, warrior one, your right foot to the right ninety degree, left foot to the right forty to forty fifty and handle. You may take the back leg in a diagonal way, if you feel that you're not able to balance, turn your feet also towards the right and bend the front knee, take your back leg one or two step back. Bend the front knee to ninety degree, okay? And your hip also facing the right, just go down, breathing in, raise your hands up, tighten your palms over the head in namaskar, bend back and stay. Just bend back, in case of knee pain, keep your legs straight only, in case of knee pain, keep your legs straight or else you can repeat any of the other asanas, three. Very good, four. Five, just bend back and stay in a comfortable level, do not cross the limits of your physical limit, five. Easy, six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve, breathe in, make your knees straight, breathe out, your hands on your hips, turn to the other side, your legs apart only, turn to the left, left foot to left ninety degree, right forty to forty degree. Bend the left knee, take your back leg one or two steps more back, breathe in, hands up, tighten your palms and just bend back and stay, bend back and stay. That's very good, one, in case of knee pain, keep your both knees straight, two, very good, three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve, breathe out, your hands down on the hip and turn to the right in the same way, first the right side, then ho jaiye, pashto tanaasana, interlock your fingers at the back. And this time your both knees are straight, heart peaches interlock laga. Interlock your fingers at the back and this time your both knees are straight, heart peeches se interlock lagaaya, strap your skin here. Stretch up, breathe and breathe out, bend down towards the right leg, if you are not able to balance, keep your hands down on the floor. And stay and this time your both knees are straight, your both knees are straight. Good one, you may use the strap or else you can keep your hands down on the floor, very good, come on, five, breathing out normally, six. Your knees straight, seven, very good, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, easy, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Well, breathe and come up, just turn to the side, towards the left, breathe out, bend down to the left and stay there. Bend down to the left and stay, good one, your legs nicely apart, your legs nicely apart, two, very good, three. Easy four, when only as much you are able to, five, your knees are straight, six, seven, yeah. If you are not able to do, you can skip, no problem, eight, yeah, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Very good, breathe and come up, breathe out, relax your hands, just come straight and stay, just one more asana here. Uh, relax two times deep breathing breathe out, two times deep breathing breathe out. Yeah, wide leg forward bend, Padavatan Asana, legs apart, legs apart, breathing and raise your hands up. And slowly breathing out, bend forward down boat as much as possible. In case of back ache, high BP, stiff back, you can stay half the way, others bend down, if you are more flexible. If you are highly flexible, try to bring your palms in between your legs and also the top of your head in between the legs. If less flexible, little bit forward, in case of stiff back, back ache, high BP, only half bent and stay there, one. Deep breathing breathe outs, come on, two, stay everybody, three, keep the knees straight, four, keep your knees straight, five, easy six, seven, eight, easy nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, press your palms and bring your legs somehow closer and then breathing and come up, breathe out. Relax your hands, legs and sit down, everybody, sit down and let's do butterfly for the vine. You can adjust your camera on your camera focus on the mat and sit down. Uh, let's do butterfly for the vine, you can join your feet and catch all the toes, keep your body straight. And just swing your knees up and down, up and down, that's very good, breathing out normally, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Right, take your legs slightly forward, have some space here and bring your knees down as much as possible, Purva Asana, breathing and stretch up. And slowly breathing out, bend forward down boat and stay down, just bend down and stay, good one. Bend as much as possible, bend as much as possible, it's two, easy three, four, five, easy six, seven, eight, nine, ten, very good, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Come back, it's okay, come back, breathing and come up very slowly, breathe out. Uh, relax your hands and sit on any comfortable cross leg post and get ready for Parvita Asana, your back straight, back straight, breathing and. Bring your hands side for up foot, interlock your fingers over the head, stretch up and breathe out, bend towards your right side and stay, bend towards the right. Uh, stay elbow straight and stretched, uh, both knees are down, both knees are down, very good, deep breathing breathe out, three. Samne ne bhen karna, sirf aapki side se bhen ke jee, five, easy six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Very good, breathe and come straight, stretch up, when you breathe out, bend towards the left. Samne aise nahi karna aur peecher bhi nahi jana, laterly side se bhen ke jee, good one, elbows straight and stretched, two, easy three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Very good, breathe and come straight, breathe out, relax your hands, interlock your fingers at the back or else use your strap. If you are using the strap, use only shoulder width wide and come on, rotate the shoulders back, stretch up, breathe and your. Breathing out, bend down, lifting your hands up from back, half pitches in taki, need to bend pieces, good one. Yeah, very good, bend only as much you are able to or as much you are comfortable, three, very good, four, five, easy six, seven, eight, nine, stay down, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, very good, breathe and slowly, slowly, come up, breathe out, relax your hands. Again breathing and come on, put your palms in front of the chest in namaskar mudra, twist your body to the right, breathe out, bend down to the right. Your left elbow on the right thigh or right knee, right elbow's up, turn your head and neck up and look up from back, peeches se upar rahi hai, good one. Come on, look up from back, two, very good, three, four, easy five, six, stay seven, eight, easy nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Very good, breathe and come straight in the same way, breathing out, opposite side, opposite side in the same way. Right elbow on the left thigh or left knee, left elbow up, look up from back, very good, one, deep breathing breathe outs, two, stay everybody, three, four, five, easy six, look up from back, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Easy thirteen, you are alright Gayatri, fourteen, okay, fifteen, breathe and uh, just come up, breathe out, relax your hands, legs and get ready for Dhanusha Sasthasmashter. Your right leg is stretched and your left is folded, your back straight, in case if you are tired, you can skip one or two asanas in between. Right leg is to the right as much as possible, breathe and raise your hands up, tell your body towards the right, breathe out, bend down to the right. Uh, stretches fine nicely, do not round up like this, stretch nicely, stretch forward down boat and stay, bend as much as possible and stay, good, very good one. Easy two, three, four, very good, five, six, seven, eight, easy nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Very good, breathe and come up, raising the hands up and breathe out, your hands down, side change, fold the right and stretch the left. Turn towards the left, breathing and hands up in the same way, bend to the left, same way, left side se bhen ke jee. Tina, same asna, opposite side. Yes, one, left co stretch karke karna, two, very good, three, four, five, easy six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Come up, raising your hands up, breathe out, your hands down and stretch up your both legs to the side, Upavastakona Asana. Uh, restrictions for back ache and high BP, you can go for only half bent, stretch up nicely, breathing and hands up. And slowly breathing out, bend forward down boat, if you are more flexible, you can bring your chest, head or chin down. If you are lacking flexibility or stiff back, only half bent and stay, if you are having back ache, stiff back or any high BP issues. Or go for only half bent and stay or else you can repeat any of the other asanas like Parvita Asana or your, good one, stay down, two, or else you can repeat your Mudra, three. With cross leg, four, easy one, five, yeah, six, seven, very good, come on, eight, do not move once you are in the pose, ten, easy eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Well, breathing and slowly, slowly, come up, raising your hands up, breathe out, your hands down and stretch your legs forward together. Put your hands on the back, put your hands on the back, just relax in the right, two times deep breathing breathe out, two times deep breathing breathe out. And then fold your legs one by one, fold your legs one by one, uh, come to Vatirasana, we will go for Mandukasana. Close your fingers over the thumb, bring your hands up the groin, stretch up, breathe and and slowly breathing out, bend forward down boat, bend forward down boat and stay. Good one, come on, bend down as much as possible, two, bend down as much as possible, three, very good, four, five, do not lift your hip up, six, seven, easy, eight, nine, ten, eleven, easy twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Well, breathe and come up slowly, slowly, relax your hands, legs and you know, or stretch your upper body forward and then your legs at the back, just thumb down. Rest your upper body down, fold your legs from back, just swing your knees up and down or side to side, just relax your knees and the legs. Just go for only two to three on side and three movement each side. Yeah, once you feel alright, get ready for Dhanu Dhanasana, uh, fold your legs from back, your knees slightly apart, catch all the ankles. Breathing and slowly lift your both sides of the body up and stay, both sides of the body up and stay. Good one, in case of any serious abdominal issues, in case of any serious abdominal issues, you may skip this pose, two. Uh, look up everybody, three, or else lift only as much you are able to, four, look up, easy, five, six, seven, eight, easy nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Breathe out, just come down, relax, relax your hands, legs and just come on your back, uh, come on the back in Shavasana. Uh, come on the back in Shavasana and get ready for Pavan Muttasana, wind relieving pose, Pavan Muttasana, wind relieving pose, yeah, get ready. If you feel tired, you miss it one or two asanas, no issues, legs together in a single breathe out, try to get into the final pose. Single breathe out, try to get into the final pose, press your knees to uh, chest, your forehead to the knees and your chin to collarbone. But one, stay everybody, two, very good, three, and deep breathing breathe outs, four, five, six, seven, try to touch forehead to me, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Very good, breathe and breathing out, just calm down, your head down, relax your hands, legs, two times deep breathing breathe out, two times deep breathing breathe out. Uh, after this, we will go for Seethu Bandhasana or else Chakrasana, if you are able to do Chakrasana, you can give a try, wheel pose, otherwise bridge pose, Seethu Bandhasana. Uh, heels close to the hips, feet apart, knees apart, catch all your ankles by the respect your hands, breathing and uh, try to lift your uh, thighs stressed up. And your pelvic up, good, very good, come on, stay, deep breathing breathe outs, two, very good, three, very good, four, yeah, any back bend is fine, five, six, seven, easy, eight, do not move, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, easy, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, for twenty, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Very good, breathe out, just calm down, relax, relax, two times deep breathing breathe out, two times deep breathing breathe out. Uh, followed by this, you have two options, you may go for Purana Halasana or else Anand Balasana, Happy Child pose or else Purana Halasana. If you are able to do Purana Halasana, go for that, otherwise Anand Balasana, Happy Child. Uh, in Purana Halasana, try to bring your toes, uh, legs behind the heads, maybe you can support your hips. If not able to do Purana Halasana, go for Anand Balasana, lifting head up in Anand Balasana is optional, one, easy come on, two, three, easy, four, do not move once you are in the final pose, five. Once you are in the final pose, do not move, good, six, seven, eight, nine, easy ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Very good, breathe and breathing out, just come down, come down, you you can relax, no Sarvangasana today, you can relax, the last one is uh, twisting pose, Makarasana. The last one is Makarasana, twisting pose. Uh, you you may go for the legs together one or legs apart one, anything is fine, uh, put your hands to shoulder level, your hands to shoulder level. Uh, feet together are apart, no issues, breathe and breathing out, uh, twist your body, take your legs and lower body to right, head and upper body to left. Uh, feel the stretch, your hands at shoulder level and stay everybody and stay deep breathing breathe outs, good one, very good, two, stay three, four, five, six, seven, eight, easy nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Breathe and come up, breathe out, opposite side, if you are not able to do, you can continue Shavasana, one, very good, two, three, four, five, easy six, seven, eight, nine, easy ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Come back, that's okay, breathe and come up, breathe out, relax your hands, legs and get into uh, Shavasana directly. We will be going for a quick Shavasana, so everyone stay till the end, everyone stay till the end, good, observe your breathing for a while, observe your breathing for a while. And now slowly bring the focus on your body parts. Relax with toes, the sole of your feet. Your heels and the ankle joints. Your heels and the ankle joints. Relax your heels, ankle joints. Followed by your. Cough muscles on the knees. Relax your cough muscles on the knees. Then comes your. Thighs, just try to relax your, both the thighs and all the muscles of your thighs. Relax your both the thighs and all the muscles of your thighs. And then comes your. Hip joints. Let's try to relax your hip joints. Abdomen and your chest. Relax your abdomen and your chest. Hands on the shoulder joints. Neck under back. If you have any kind of pain. Stress. Or any stiffness or discomfort on your neck back or shoulder joints. Just feel while taking a deep breath and. And relax as a breath out. Then comes your head and your face. Relax all the muscles, all the parts of your face. Relax your chin. Your teeth. Ears. Mouth. Lips. Nose. The tip of your nose. Just try to feel the freshness of the air. When it goes and. And the warm air. When it comes out from your nostrils. Just be focused on your breathing for the wine. Be focused on your breathing for the wine. And then slowly want your eyes. Relax your both eyes. Eyebrows. Forehead. And then slowly come in between your eyebrows. And stay focused in between your eyebrows for a while. Just be focused in between your eyebrows for a while. And now, once again. Go through all the parts of your body. Right from your toes to the hand. And now observe your abdominal and which is my name. Does it come down? Your body and mind both are globally relaxed. And you're not having any stress, any pain or any kind of stiffness or discomfort on any part of your body. And also. To feel very light, very fresh and very energetic because your body and mind both are globally relaxed. Pure relax, pure relax. And now slowly try to bring awareness of your body. And all the parts of your body and your surroundings. If you get enough of awareness, try to bring the legs together, hands with the body. And slowly turn to side and come to sitting position for home times. Your back is straight, uh, hands on the knees and chin mother, eyes are closed. Take a long deep breath and breathe out with home. Rub your palms nicely. Keep your palms on your eyes and then slowly open your eyes and relax your hands, thank you all and have a nice day. In case of any doubt, you can stay, otherwise you can leave, bye everybody, uh, see you all.
Bye ma'am.
Tomorrow is Monday, right? So tomorrow.